Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, April 7th, 2025 at 7:01 PM, and we are in regular session tonight. I'd like to start by acknowledging that here in Athens County, we live and work on land, initially settled and developed by earlier people, particularly the Shawnee and the Osage and those identified through cultures, commonly known as the Adena, Hopewell, and Fort Ancient. This acknowledgement reminds us of the importance of honoring history, people, and the planet as we work to improve our city's legacy. Our first order of business this evening is to establish quorum. Six of seven council members are in attendance, and we have quorum this evening. Our next item of business is the disposition of minutes from the regular council session of council held March 17th, 2025. May I have a motion to approve the disposition of these minutes?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose nay. The minutes are approved. Next, we have communications. I would first like to announce that the city of Athens has received a liquor permit transfer for the property at 700 East State Street, the former Maplewood Drive-Thru for people who go back that far, and more recently, Soul. This is a transfer for the same location from Wilson Enterprises of Athens LLC for that same address to Newsom Enterprises LLC at that same address. It does include D1, beer only for on-premises consumption or in sealed containers for carryout; D3, spiritus liquor for on-premises consumption only until 1:00 AM; and D6, sale of intoxicating liquor on Sunday between the hours of 10:00 AM or 11:00 AM and midnight. Is there any motion from council to request a hearing on this liquor permit transfer?
So moved.
So you would, you...
If it's necessary.
That would be up to you. Do you feel that it's necessary?
If it's not necessary, then no.
Okay. Anyone would, does anyone request a permit, a hearing on this? It's a permit for the same location, same, same permit. Okay, thank you. Moving on, we next are privileged to invite a local poet to the podium. Wendy McVicker is here this evening to read a poem, I believe, which will be very appropriate for our current conditions, shall I say, in Athens. If you are reading the poem, I think you're reading. And we're very happy to have the former poet laureate and my neighbor Wendy McVicker. Thank you.
Thank you. I feel honored to be here and to read this poem in this setting. I wrote it shortly after the November election, and I read it to remind myself that I wanted to be strong but not hard. And it's called, it goes like this. "Be Water." And it has an epigraph from Linda Hogan, the indigenous poet Linda Hogan. "To enter stone, be water. Machines can smash stone. Machines shear mountains, crush great rocks into pebbles, and raise roaring clouds of dust that blind and choke. But look at what water does. Year after year, gentling the earth, hollowing rock into curves and portholes, small places where lichen and mosses catch hold, endure. Water eases thirst as it rearranges the world. Be like that." Thank you.
Thank you, poet McVicker. I was thinking of the Hocking River and the water we have, but I appreciate all, all, love, love the poetry. The Athens Municipal Arts Commission really expressed enthusiastic support for and continuing to sort of celebrate our arts and including poetry in our civic spaces. And we do have a tradition of having our Athens poet laureates and others read poems at city council meetings, so we're very pleased to have Wendy McVicker back with us. Okay, any other communications? Oh, I'm sorry, I have one more, Member Reisner. Apologies. I just want to announce that Ohio University is celebrating Earth Day next Monday, April 14th, from noon to 4:00 PM in the Walter Hall Rotunda. Mayor Patterson will be there to kick things off with the proclamation. The keynote address will be by Professor Jeff DeBelko, and we have lots of community partners and student groups that, with lots of information, particularly about environmental sustainability. So we hope you're able to join us on Monday, April 14th. Now, Member Reisner?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Ms. Vickers, for your poem. Since this dovetails with the Athens Municipal Art Commission, which I am a council representative, the commission has just printed for distribution the mural walking tour uptown and around mural map. There we are. Which, on the back, has the names and descriptions of all the mural art that's on this map, along with QR codes, which gives further information through the internet. Let me just read the opening paragraph. "The murals in this walking tour are more than just pretty wall covers. They bear testament to a fundamental feature of life here, the primacy of celebrating Athens' history, culture, and creative spirit." And I think that sums up pretty much the intent of these brochures. I have several up here that I've already distributed among members of council, and if anyone in the audience would care for one, you can pick one up at the end of our meeting tonight.
Thank you, Member Reisner. Other council members, members?
Yes, for those of you that don't know, this is Library Week, and there is free fare on the bus this whole week, the 7th through the 11th. And the National Library Week, "Ride Public Transit for Free," it says. Ride Athens Public Transit or Athens On Demand to your public library or wherever your daily journey takes you. So that's the announcement. You can save a little bit of money out there and let people know who might be interested. And take the bus once in a while, they're great.
Other communications from council members? Yes, Member Wood?
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight the Walk, Talk, and Roll event that happened over the weekend, on Friday, put on by Dave McNally and the folks at the Disabilities Rights Commission. It was, it was a great event. It was a great bit of sort of citizen activism, showing how challenging it can be to cross the street in Athens in a wheelchair. Davy sent a letter highlighting that out of at least 45 people who attempted it, not a single person was able to cross, about 10 would have fallen out of the wheelchair had there not been someone spotting them. As the tape evidences, I am in both of those groups. I did not finish, and I almost would have, I tried to tip myself out of the chair. So I wanted to highlight the important work that they're doing and the importance of that issue, and just commend Davy and those folks for doing great work.
I also tried, by the way, and failed miserably. Any other communications from city council members?
I wasn't going to out you.
Thanks, Michael. All right, we're moving now onto reports and communications of other elected officials. Law Director Liasson?
No.
Auditor Hector, you with us tonight? Treasurer Thomas?
Yeah.
Mayor Patterson?
I just have a few items to brief council on tonight. First, and poet laureate McVicker, thank you for that wonderful poem. It's timely with the, the fact that the river is now receding, thank goodness. I think that we maxed out at 20.4 feet. They're projecting 22. 22 is when we start to see water lapping over East State Street, so we certainly dodged a higher water event here in the city of Athens. Currently, it's down to 19.4 feet and continuing to recede, which is good news. With that, worth noting, you may have seen that we pushed out a release earlier today about Joneswood in Athens, the street where it's going to be closed to through traffic, only for local traffic. There is residents that live up there. The property, or the house on 10 Joneswood, which, as far as we can tell, is a vacant property, and it is being condemned because it is literally sliding down the hill, unfortunately, due to the water events, the rainfall that we've had. Another property, just to update council on, and those of you who are here tonight, 92 Grovesner is also going through the condemnation process through the city, that we are going to have that facility, that house condemned. It is in very poor, uninhabitable condition right now, and so it is going to be condemned. You'll also see the red placard with the X on it for both 10 Joneswood and for, for Grovesner. Back to Joneswood, another thing with this slip that we're experiencing over on Joneswood, which is affecting the single property, but it has also affected the roadway to where we're able at this point in time to shore up the water line, so we don't anticipate much, if any disruption of water on Joneswood. However, if we find that that's not able to, we're not able to maintain that, we do have a plan in place to put a temporary line that'll go through to continue to have water feeding the homes that are on the far end of Joneswood. But again, it is closed to through traffic. It is only local traffic up there because of us having lost a small but important portion of the street, the roadway, and again, I mentioned the house. Earlier today, at 2:00, we had a press conference. Unfortunately, it was listed as a press conference and a moment for, for citizen participation to talk about issue three, which is the income tax increase. I know that Councilmember Swank was in attendance. There was a good number of people who did show up to that, that press conference where we basically laid out all the information about the income tax increase in the city of Athens, which is a 0.3% income tax increase, or 0.3 income tax increase. Tentatively, we have a town hall meeting that will be sponsored by or hosted by the League of Women Voters. We're looking at, tentatively, April 14th, which is next Monday, from 5:30 to 6:30 at the community center. We also have, on, on heavy rotation, the press conference from earlier today. You can view it on the city's YouTube or on the city's Facebook, or you can tune into Channel 1024 and watch it there. There will also be another press conference, it's a press conference for the media to come, but the public can come and listen as well, that will be at noon, or no, it'll be at 2:00 PM on Monday, the 14th as well, so two events on the 14th. Couple last items, just to share with council. The Age Friendly Athens County put out its 2024 program highlights, and one of the things that I thought was rather interesting and worthy of sharing is that AARP, which heads up the Age Friendly Program, certifies that Athens County has put forward, or yeah, Athens County, Ohio, has put forth an action plan that they recognize for aging in place here in the county. The AARP Network of Age Friendly States and Communities, so we're now part of that esteemed cohort. Last thing is, we had the, the General Assembly meeting for the Athens, or the Buckeye Hills Regional Council. They put out their annual report of 2024, and one of the main things I want to highlight for you is through Buckeye Hills Regional Council, which is our, our LDD, our Local Development District, is that investments in southeast Ohio through a number of different programs for 2024, there was $16.8 million that came to southeast Ohio, which is pretty impressive when you look at the need that we have. $97.9 million total in project costs for different projects that went on throughout the county last year, and more to come, or through southeast Ohio, within the region, I should say, which is an eight-region footprint for, for Buckeye Hills Regional Council. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Reminded me that I wanted to commend the local citizens who participated in the protest on East State Street last Saturday. Seemed to be from, from at least my vantage point, a very peaceful and positive event of people sharing their thoughts on matters, and there seemed to be a lot of support from the community as they were participating in their sign waving and chanting and different activities. So I encourage that, that civic participation in a very peaceful manner. We now move on to ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 25-25 is an ordinance granting a special right-of-way use permit at 145 Grovesner Street for construction of a wooden fence that crosses an unused city alleyway. Introduced by Councilmember Swank.
Thank you, President Crowe. Fairly routine matter tonight, been in committee, showed the pictures of the fenced area on the alleyway, and the title, as President Crowe read, pretty well sums it up, granting a right-of-way. It's a seven-year right-of-way, which can be renewed at seven years. This is an alley that literally goes to nowhere, it disappears into the hill. I would move that council pass, zero, 25, 25.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 25-25. Any comments or questions? Yes, Member Claude Filter?
I noticed in the fuller version of this that the homeowner only has seven days to build the fence. Do we know if that's going to work for his life and timeline? At least, that's how I read it.
All I see is the special right-of-way permit is personal in nature, will be in effect for a maximum of seven years.
Oh, was it years? Sorry.
From the date of issuance.
It's kind of different.
I think you can get it built in seven years.
Yeah, seems likely. Sorry.
It's okay. Any other comments or questions from city council members? Okay, other elected officials, city administration, audience members? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 26-25 is an ordinance amending the 2025 appropriation ordinance, 115-24, and amending ordinance 127-23, authorizing design construction and construction engineering of the Dairy Lane Stagecoach Sewer as part of the City-County Sewer Expansion Project Number 317. Introduced by Member Thomas on behalf of Member McCary.
Thank you. Just for a quick refresh, these are just changes and updates to the total cost that will close out this project. The funds went to sidewalks, bike path repaving, and some adjustments over the project for a total increase of $200,000. Changes are down in Section 3, where it reads, "Service Safety Director is further authorized to expand up to $6,938,000," six million, nine hundred thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and one, at, and for said project as follows, $285,000 from Street Fund 220 for sidewalk design and construction. I move that we pass this ordinance.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second for approval. Are there any comments or questions from city council members? Elected officials, city administration, audience members? All those in favor of passing ordinance 26-25 signify by saying aye. Oppose nay. Motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 27-25 is an ordinance amending ordinance 33-24, authorizing a city fiber network, Project Number 347. Introduced by Councilmember Thomas on behalf of Councilmember McCary.
Thank you. This is another ordinance with just some updates on cost. This is for the installation of city fiber from City Hall, heading south through town through a various path to Richland Fire Station 2, and ends at Canterbury, and it will impact the signals and signage in between. The changes are an increase of $450,000, and they are spelled out in Section 3, which is longer than we probably really need to read, but I would move that we pass this amendment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance 27-25. Any comments or questions? Elected officials, Mayor Patterson, audience members? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose nay. Motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 28-25 is an ordinance authorizing all actions necessary to accept the Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council, NOPEC, 2025 Energized Community Grants Funds. Introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll make a motion if we adopt 28-25.
Second.
This ordinance has been discussed in committee, it's been read twice. We all have a copy on our hard drive. We've done this before in the past to accept grants from NOPEC, and we've used them for energy savings and green energy projects within the city. So I see no reason why we shouldn't adopt this and take this money.
Thank you, Member Reisner. We have a motion and a second for approval. Are there any comments or questions from city council? Elected officials, city administration, audience members? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose nay. Motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. Excuse me. We now have ordinances for second reading. I will read the title and check to see if there are any comments or questions. Ordinance 29-25 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to close streets in the uptown area for the Dora Kickoff Book Fair, the Plains Lions Club Cruisin's, the Pride Street Fair, Ohio Brew Week, the Athens Community Arts and Music Festival, Bounty on the Bricks, and the Halloween Block Party, and to change requested dates or cancel the events as necessary. Introduced by Councilmember Spionas.
Yes. I'm sorry, but we need to make an amendment to this, unfortunately, and I will admit it was my fault that I did not see the Boogie on the Bricks request that Andrew Chicky gratefully put in. So I need to add Boogie on the Bricks.
Oh, wait, proceed your question. Lisa, do we need to leave for this part here? Should we leave?
Even for discussion, we're supposed to rehearse ourselves.
Yeah, yeah, no, I mean, do, we have to leave for the reading part, but yeah.
Just to remind the audience, Members Wood and Member Thomas do not participate in street closure ordinances due in street closure ordinances due to being owners of small businesses. Thank you. Sorry, Member Spionas. I was trying to figure out what Member Thomas was saying.
When's the right time to say something? Okay, so again, getting back to what I was talking about, we need to add the Boogie on the Bricks. They did everything correctly. I just forgot to add it last time we talked about this. So we also need to add an emergency clause, though we don't need to pass it tonight. We just have to go back to first reading. So I would like to add Bounty on the Bricks after Boogie on the Bricks, or however makes the most sense in terms of, of timing. And then it would go back to first reading. So.
We have a date on that?
Okay, so yes. Because the Dora Kickoff is to be held May 15th, I was told that it was important to add the, and the event is going to be June 14th.
June 14th.
Yes.
And what are we closing, proposing to close on June 14th?
No, that's when Boogie on the Bricks is.
Yeah, but what are we proposing to close? What, what area?
Oh, yeah. Bricks. I don't have the whole thing in front of me. I'm sorry. I just have street closure ordinance to be able to do an activity on the street. Oh, event location, Court Street, between Washington and State.
Thank you.
I do have it.
Okay, we have an amendment for 29-25 on the table. The amendment includes adding Boogie on the Bricks for June 14th, as well as adding an emergency clause to the ordinance. Is there any discussion from council on these amendments?
I would like to add to this, if that's okay?
I'm sorry, sure.
All right, so I reached out to Kristin Miller, who's President and CEO of the Athens Area Chamber of Commerce, and I asked her about the community, the, the uptown businesses' feelings about street closures in general, and all, she said although they haven't polled or surveyed members recently concerning the uptown street closures, but anecdotally, she said, opinions vary from business to business. Some are very much in favor of well-designed, thoughtful street closures that bring folks uptown, while others feel as a burden. Some have expressed frustrations over those that have outside food trucks, especially if they're.
Members Spionas, quick question. Is this an amendment to the ordinance?
No.
Okay, just hold on. Let's vote on the amendment, and then we'll be opening it up for discussion, and then you can continue to speak on. Right now, the amendment is on the table.
Okay, that's fine.
What is the purpose of the emergency clause?
The date, the first event is the.
Members Spionas, what is the purpose of the emergency clause?
The date. Well, I had a long conversation. I've had many conversations with Debbie Walker, and she explained to me that we had to do that because of the date, and then the 30 days and all that kind of stuff.
It's on May 17th. And my understanding is that she is making one motion that's going to include both addition of Boogie on the Bricks and the emergency clause.
Yes, and it was my understanding that you said that was okay.
Yes, and if by some chance it fails, then you'll have to do each one individually.
Yeah.
Would you prefer we did them individually? Would that be clearer for you?
Cleaner.
I'm going to leave that up to Members Spionas, so.
It's cleaner.
Are you okay doing them separately, Members Spionas?
All right, then she could.
Whatever, I mean, I'm going to go with, I was told that we should do it as one, based on my conversation.
I'm hearing some discrimination as to whether or not it would be cleaner to do them separately, and I did originally think that, but I understand putting them together. But if one fails, or I mean, if the entire amendment fails, then perhaps they would be separated out anyway. So if you want to do one and then do the other, it's fine.
I'd rather put them together, but.
That's fine. I think that's on the table now. Let's continue that with that.
Yeah.
Direction. Okay, so we have on the table amendments to 29-25, and we're, the, the vote on these amendments are both the emergency clause, as well as adding Boogie on the Bricks on 61425. Any comments or? Mayor Patterson?
If you're getting to the comments, I have a comment.
Right now, it's just the city council, I believe, discussing the amendment. I don't believe.
I do.
Okay, that's fine. So city council, but city council goes first, so just hold on. City council, any comments or questions on the amendment proposed by Members Spionas? Nothing, city elected officials?
My only question would be, if you're putting an emergency clause on this, does that make every single, every single thing is immediate, right? Every street closer?
Yes, but this goes back to first reading.
Right.
So there are subsequent readings, and the emergency clause just says that it will go into, it will immediately go into effect rather than waiting the 30 days.
Yep.
There will still be two more opportunities.
Treasurer Thomas, do you see an issue there that I'm not getting?
I don't sure. Well, it was in the mayor's government chair.
All right, sorry. Mayor, please. Oh, you do have something. I asked council, and council didn't have anything to say. And so then we went to.
I was looking at him as a council member. I'm sorry.
Okay, yes, Member Swank.
So with this, then it would be, if we went through the normal process, didn't suspend the rules, third reading would be on May the 5th, go into effect immediately, which would allow the event on the 17th to take place.
Thank you for that information. Mayor Patterson, would you like to communicate with us?
I would.
Please.
Thank you.
You know, this ordinance prior to Bounty on the Bricks being included, which came in later. Here's my thoughts on things. I would be careful to use the emergency clause other than what it's intended to do, which is for the health, welfare, and the safety of the citizens to have something. I would offer to council to break it apart, have a separate ordinance that comes forward for Bounty on the Bricks, keeping things on time, and not.
Do you mean Boogie on the Bricks?
Whatever. Not Bounty on the Bricks, my bad.
Boogie.
Boogie on the Bricks. And, and if you have to suspend the rules in order to make the timeline for that, to do that, but, you know, I would contend if I had to come before council for something that was related to Joneswood, as an example, that's a safety issue, and the health, welfare of the community would be predicated on, we don't have to because it's the city street, we can close it because of an emergency. You know, to, to let this go forward without the amendment, bring forward a separate ordinance that is for Bounty on the Bricks, to have a Boogie on the Bricks, to have the Boogie on the Bricks event, because I think you're really stretching the emergency clause for what the emergency clause is. Otherwise, these are just city events. These are, these are events open to the public for anyone to come, and you're closing the street for that. Can that be construed as safety? You're closing the street for the event itself.
Think it's a better idea if we just separate out Boogie and the Bricks.
I do.
So it's cleaner.
So just so everybody is on the, on the same page here, I believe the timing issue is the Dora Kickoff event. So the problem, if this goes back to first reading this evening, then there is not enough time to approve the Dora Kickoff event, which maybe is what Treasurer Thomas was getting at.
I just got to say, this is why for years they were done as separate ordinances. You're trying to compact everything into one ordinance. And again, I dealt with this Halloween, trick or treat. It's why they're separate ordinance. Each legislation gets its own timeframe and everything. Putting them all in one, this is what, this is the headache you create.
Member Swank?
The headache was created because we were late in getting this material to us.
And you always will be.
We weren't last year, and we weren't the year before, because we had our act together. This year, we did not have our act together. It's very clear we don't. We have to, if, if you want to have the event, forget Boogie on the Bricks. If you want to have the event on May 17th for the book fair kickoff, it would have to be voted on tonight. We'd have to suspend the rules and vote on it tonight for the 30 days, because even if we did nothing tonight, and this was second reading, and it goes to third reading on the 21st, nine and 17 is only 26. They couldn't have that event. So we're going to have to invoke the emergency clause or the event on the 17th of May, the Dora Kickoff Book Fair cannot take place.
Or you suspend the rules tonight?
Or we suspend the rules tonight.
That's what I thought was supposed to happen.
But in order to suspend the rules, we need an emergency clause.
That's right.
Isn't that correct?
No.
No?
No. Because there'll be 30 days before.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so we have like 16 different things we're talking about.
Personally, I like the mayor's idea of pulling Boogie on the Bricks because it's a late entry, handling it separately, and then let's deal with what we have left.
So is, is that then the only one we have to worry about in terms of passing it right away?
No.
That's what I thought.
We're fine. 21st. Would today be considered a first reading?
Yeah.
No, because we don't have it pulled out. It's not separate, yeah.
21st, 5th, 19th, not going to make it.
Okay, so. So do we have to pass the Boogie on the Bricks now? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, I believe that's correct, according to the calendar and the 30 days.
That's what I kind of thought was supposed to happen, but, okay. But I already put something on the table, so we have to, so I have to say we're going to pull that, or whatever.
Just retract your.
Retract my motion.
You could retract your motion, and the second was, was there no second? Okay.
No.
Okay, so the motion has been, has been retracted.
Okay. So I guess I want to move that we have a separate ordinance for Boogie on the Bricks, right? Because that's the one we have to get.
Would need to come to committee first.
No, I think your original intention, which was including Boogie on the Bricks in this ordinance.
Right.
Is the correct way forward. We just are not going to add an emergency clause.
No, it has to have.
Oh, it has to have emergency clause.
No, you said it didn't have to have emergency clause.
It's okay for Boogie, but not for Dora Kickoff. Right. Member Swank?
Since Boogie on the Bricks is an addition, it's not come before council yet, and any matter that comes before council has to come through committee first. So here's my, it would be a solution. Let's do the suspension, not suspension, let's do the emergency clause first, get that done, and then move on and talk about Boogie on the Bricks.
When are you going to talk about that?
I'm sorry.
When are you going to talk about that?
When or what? No, no, after this.
Well, Member Swank, Boogie on the Bricks exists in this ordinance.
No, it doesn't.
No, it doesn't.
No, that's wrong.
Oh, I'm reading it on, in the copy of the ordinance I have in front of me.
That's what I'm saying. It's.
But Councilmember Spionas, at a committee meeting, talking about these events, said there will be other applications.
I did.
Yes.
That's right. I don't think.
And I specifically mentioned Boogie on the Bricks.
And in fact, we, I believe we added the Dora Kickoff during, and the Pride, without a committee, just at the first reading of this.
We did.
This ordinance.
We did.
So I believe as a subject matter, it's been discussed at committee, and now we're simply amending that original ordinance. Mayor Patterson, help us out.
May I offer one more solution to this, in my opinion, anyway, is to move forward with a motion to amend, to include Boogie on the Bricks, it goes back to first reading, and then suspend the rules and pass the whole package as a way in which to get this all through so that everybody's events take place. The ones that are of the most concern at this point in time are the Dora Kickoff Book Fair, because that's the very first one, and that's the one that it came through at the appropriate time, was in the queue for the, the docket that went forward. So that's another solution that council.
Right, without an emergency clause, right?
It's not like this is an event that we've never seen before. Boogie on the Bricks has been around for a long time. You could bring it forward, it becomes an amendment. Amendment then becomes a first reading, suspend the rules on that first reading, and then council can decide whether to pass it.
Procedurally, that seems to make sense to me, but council, you're the voting member, so.
Okay, all right. What the mayor said.
So I believe, Member Spionas, you're looking to amend the current ordinance 29-25.
Right.
To add Boogie on the Bricks.
Right.
And that's the amendment on the table at this moment. Any discussion from council members on adding Boogie on the Bricks to this ordinance? Elected officials, anything additional? Council, community members?
I don't think there's been a second. Nobody seconded.
Okay, does anybody want to second Member Spionas's motion to amend this ordinance, add Boogie on the, uh, Boogie on the Bricks?
Second.
With a second from Member Claude Filter. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The amendment has been approved, Members Spionas.
So now we need to.
Make a motion to suspend the.
Yes, make a mo, what?
I have another amendment I'd like to possibly offer.
Member Swank?
So we're not dealing with the emergency clause before I move on with this?
Correct.
Okay, as you recall, at the last two meetings, the committee meeting and at first reading, I had some real concerns about the event on September the 6th, the Ohio Brew Week. And in the interim, I have had conversations with the senior women's athletic director at Ohio University. I've had conversations with the athletic director at Ohio University, and I've had conversations with Captain Meek, the operations director for OUPD. And if you recall, the reason I brought this up is that that is the same day as the first home football game, which is Ohio University and West Virginia. And in talking with those three individuals, some real concerns came up. First of all, they are expecting 30,000 people for that game, which would be 4,000 more than we have ever had for a home football game here in Athens, Ohio. Captain Meek has already contracted with outside agencies to provide backup police protection for traffic and pedestrian safety and crowd control for that game. He thinks with the backup that he will be able to effectively do their job. We do not have a start time for that game. We don't know if it's going to be noon, 3:30, or 7 o'clock. It will be picked up, though. No doubt about it. This, even though the two schools are in different conferences, the two states are next door to each other, and for those who know anything about WVU football, getting a ticket to one of those games is kind of like trying to get a ticket to an Ohio State game. You can't. And there will be people, particularly those that live on both sides of the river, who have actually purchased or in the process of purchasing season tickets to Ohio University's football game, West Virginia fans, so they can get into that game. I've also talked with the folks at a couple of the businesses on West Union Street, where this would take place, and they're a bit concerned, too, if the, the event is scheduled from 4 to 11 o'clock, and will block off the entire street and have a stage area. They're concerned about access to their establishments, and they're also concerned about access to their establishments for those wanting to use restrooms. Putting 30,000 people in Peeden Stadium, we're also going to have an event that we're going to be selling beer on the street. I'm not opposed to the event, but in talking with these folks, it seems like great time, wrong time. Great time for those participating, but at the wrong time. So I would like council to consider striking this event on that date from this proposal. It's not till September. There is an away football game the week before, and away football game the week after. Two wonderful weekends to have it. Oh, and I forgot to mention, this is the first home football game, and from my experience working with Ohio University, particularly in residence life, particularly the freshmen go to that first game. It's new. It's a big deal. In fact, as a former dorm director, the RA staff was mobilized to get as many people there as possible. In short. In short, it can be a lot of people in a small area, and I think this event, while a worthy event, would be better suited for another day. So I would move that we temporarily remove this, not temporarily, we remove this event from this ordinance and consider it at another time when we have more information about this game and the possibility of this thing coming off and being successful. I would so move.
We have a motion on the table to amend this ordinance, to remove Ohio Brew Week on September 6, 2025, on West Union Street, from Congress to court.
So Sam, we've already got one amendment.
Is there a second?
Do we add this amendment to the one I already said? Because we haven't finished with mine yet, so that's kind of weird.
Yeah, we did. We all voted to, we approved your amendment. We're past that now, now we have another amendment we're considering. So is there anybody on city council who would like to second Member Swank's amendment to remove Ohio Brew Week from this ordinance?
Has anybody talked to them?
That's my question.
Yeah.
Do we have a chain of communication with the organizers of that, or would this just blindside them?
What we're approving tonight is a, or possibly approving tonight, is a road closure, and this event is, what, five months away?
True, but some people plan, do a lot of planning five months in advance.
Did you take a look at their application?
I did not.
There's not much in it.
Yeah, okay.
Respectfully, we have an amendment on the table to amend this. If there is a second, then there can be further discussion. Is there a second?
I don't know. I do want to say that I spoke with Andrew Chickie about this specific issue, and he felt that it wasn't an issue, and that they've dealt with this on, you know, many other occasions, although Member Swank says this will be the biggest ever or something, so I don't know, but I just wanted to bring it up, that I did talk about it with, you know, our deputy service safety director, and he felt confident that it would be fine.
But he had no conversation with Ohio University.
That could be.
That's not could be, it is be. I asked Director Cromer directly
Okay.
on Wednesday this week, and no one from the city had contacted her.
Okay.
Mayor Patterson?
My clarification, or at least to reinforce something, that this is not during the Dora period, this is outside of the Dora period. And when you do something like this, this type of an event, it has to, someone has to get an F-2 permit in which to sell alcohol within a cordoned area. Along with that comes security, as well as managing the crowd that is within the boundaried F-2 permit area, just so that everyone's clear on that with this, so.
We have a motion on the table. Member Spielness, there's no further amendments to your ordinance, so you may move on to your next, what you need to do for this ordinance this evening.
Okay, that's fine. Well, because of adding boogie on the bricks, we also, the ne... Oh, do you want to read the next one?
No, so are you gonna suspend the rules for this ordinance?
Oh, yeah, we, this has gotten complicated.
Sorry.
Okay, yes, we are gonna suspend the rules, and...
You're making a motion to suspend the rules?
And making a motion to suspend the rules, thank you.
Is there a second of suspending the rules?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules for 29-25. Is there any comments or questions on the suspension of the rules?
Point of order from the law director, how many votes do we need on this?
I think you have enough present.
All but one.
Yes.
I'm sorry?
All but one.
All but one, okay. So what's the percent, 75% is what we need?
Uh, well, of those present, all but one, so.
Four out of five.
Yes.
Four out of five, no, it's only four people.
We have four people here, so we're gonna need three out of four.
Three out of four.
Yes.
I can't count.
It's okay.
There's no emergency clause, so that would have a different requirement.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to suspend the rules for 29-25. And we have a second. Is there any comment from the treasurer? No. Mayor Patterson, anything additional to add? Members of the public on this motion on the table? All those in favor of suspending the rules for 29-...
If somebody wants to talk.
Please, yes, I'm sorry, couldn't see you. Just tell us your name and your...
That's all, I was hesitating.
Okay, no worries, we're glad to have you. Name and address, and whether you represent a group.
Cheryl Sylvester, 7561 Long Meadow Lane, Athens. Here representing Tony's Tavern. Our manager, representative from Casa, I believe Mr. Studney Arts is here, West Union and the Union. Thank you for all your work. It's, this is obviously a difficult process, but thank you. This is our third fundraiser at Tony's, so we would appreciate all the support. We've done two fundraisers for Rising Suns, nonprofit pharmacy, which were fabulous. We had the Bookmobile last month.
Fair beginning of March.
Yeah, beginning of March, and it was fabulous. They had 150 families come through, and that, they just parked in front of Tony's. So we're looking forward to raising some money and it being the Dora kickoff. So thank you. If there's any questions of us, you know where we are, so, thank you.
Thank you for being here. Now moving on to a vote on the suspension of the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
I record, Law Director, three to one in favor of suspending the rules.
Two who have had a conflict.
Conflict and one not present, correct. So, Members Spielness, the rules have been suspended.
Okay, so I move that we pass this ordinance as amended and talked about today. So I'm looking for a second.
We have a motion and a second to approve zero, ordinance 29-25. Any comments or questions?
I just want to finish the couple of comments from Kristen Miller that I started.
Please, yes, now is the time.
Okay, and so in essence, what I'm hearing from her is that although there are some businesses that aren't thrilled about all of the events, overall, my understanding of this is that they feel pretty good about it. They would like to get more information, things like that, make sure that it's, you know, they're promoted better, that sort of thing, but not really an objection overall from the chamber and the bulk of their members. So I think, for the most part, they feel okay about it.
Excellent, and it's good that we now have some local business owners in the audience who are here tonight to participate, we appreciate that. Yes, Member Swank?
Two things, I forgot to ask Cheryl, any chance you're gonna have opportunity for those people who come to that to sign up possibly for the Imagination Library?
Um, they could probably do that through the library.
Okay.
Yeah, because we'll have library reps.
Okay.
Be there.
Even, they'll be able to get a library card also, and I imagine they can help with the Imagination Library.
That's great, it's a good program. Yeah, secondly, I'm gonna vote no on this thing, but I want to explain why. I support every one of these events, including bounty, Ohio Brew Week Fall Fest, I just don't support that day, and therefore I'm gonna vote no, but I do support every other one of these, want to make that clear.
Great, thank you, Member Swank. Any other comments or questions? We have a motion and a second to approve 29-25. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
I see a three to one vote for approving ordinance 29-25. We now move on to ordinance 30-25, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Chapter 11.04, vending, peddling, and soliciting to allow vending in designated event areas, introduced by Councilmember Spielness.
Okay, again, I need to ask for an amendment to add boogie on the bricks for the reasons obvious, they, in their application, they would like to have some vending, peddling, and soliciting apparently, or one or all the above. They want to have some trucks in the area for their event. So that's the minor amendment. I'd like to move that we make that minor amendment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to amend ordinance 30-25. Any comments or questions on this amendment? Treasurer, city administration, audience members? All those in favor of amending 30-25, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The motion, the amendment is approved, and do you have any other items?
Yeah, do we need to suspend the rules on that one, too, then?
I think you'll have to do it on the next one also.
Yes, exactly. So I move to suspend the rules for the reason that we need to get this passed soon, so they can do what they need to do to make this happen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules for 30-25. Any comments or questions on the suspension? Treasurer, mayor, members of the public? Seeing none, all those in favor of suspending the rules, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The rules have been suspended, Members Spielness.
Okay, so I move that we pass this amen, this ordinance as amended.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass 30-25. Any comments or questions on approving this ordinance? From the treasurer, from the city administration, from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The motion carries, and the ordinance has been approved. Ordinance 31-25 is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Title 13, General Offenses. Chapter 13.04, Offenses Against Public Peace, Section 13.04.10, Unnecessary Noise in Designated Event Areas, introduced by Councilmember Spielness.
Yes, again, for obvious reasons, since it's boogie on the bricks and there's music, and will be, loud, they would like to have that added to that opportunity to be noisy longer and louder. So I move that we amend and add boogie on the bricks.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to amend 31-25 to add boogie on the bricks. Any comments or questions on this amendment from city council, city administration, members of the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The amendment is successful, and back to you, Members Spielness.
Okay, now, suspend the rule, I'd like to move that we suspend the rules so that we can get this passed for the reasons we've discussed with the other ones, so let's move on with that. I need a second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules for 31-25. Any comments or questions on the suspension? City administration, audience members? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The rules have been suspended, Members Spielness.
Okay, so now I'd like to move that we pass ordinance number 3125.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 31-25. Any comments or questions on this ordinance? City administration, members of the public? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries, and the ordinance has been approved. Ordinance, excuse me, thir... Uh, yes, thank you. You guys miss all the fun, I don't know, you know, gotta think about this decision. All right, welcome back, Members Thomas and Wood. Ordinance 32-25 is an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to suspend temporarily the fee for parking at muted spaces in the municipal parking garage on certain dates in December 2025, introduced by Councilmember Spielness. Ordinance 33-25 is an ordinance suspending Athens City Code, Section 7.05.03, Continuous Parking in the Same Location, from Sunday, December 14, 2025, through midnight on Sunday, January 11, 2026, introduced by Councilmembers Spielness. Ordinance 34-25 is an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to advertise and accept bids where necessary, and enter into contracts for construction of the state route 68256, Intersection Improvements Project, number 357, introduced by Councilmembers Spielness.
Yes, I feel that I need to comment on this, because I made quite a few comments when we discussed it earlier, and that is that based on information I discovered, because our EPW staff was out taking care of emergencies today, I talked with Eric Davis at ODOT, and he confirmed that, in fact, the last version of the designs for the roundabout that this is referring to, will have a sidewalk that goes from the intersection, the crosswalk, to Margaret Creek Bridge, which is the, the city limits there. And so with that, I, people had been asking me about it, it was, you know, I got some letters and comments and calls and whatnot, so I wanted to confirm that, yes, in fact, that was true, so therefore I'm looking forward to this going forward.
Thank you, Members Spielness. Member Swank?
Where is Margaret Creek Bridge?
It's the bridge right between the 68256 intersection and the train tracks. It's only about 30, 40 yards from the intersection.
Yeah, it's close.
On, and it'd be a, what's gonna be there, sidewalk?
Sidewalk will extend from the new roundabout to the bridge.
To the bridge.
To the bridge, on one side?
682.
On one side or both sides?
One side.
I believe on the north side. No, south side.
South side, okay.
South side.
I think it's the south side. Okay, moving on to ordinance 35-25. Is an ordinance authorizing engineering and construction of the Athens Streetscape Beautification Project, number 383, introduced by Councilmember Spielness. Ordinance 36-25. It's an ordinance authorizing engineering services for design of the Columbus Road Lift Station, project number 359, introduced by Councilmember McCary. Ordinance 37-25 is an ordinance amending the 2025 Appropriation Ordinance 115-24, and authorizing the auditor to make an interfund transfer, introduced by Councilmember Reisner. Okay, we now move on to ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 39-25 is an ordinance amending ordinance 08-25, authorizing the service safety director to advertise and accept bids where necessary, and enter into contract for construction of the rehabilitation of the Stimson Avenue Bridge, amending the 2025 Appropriation Ordinance 115-24, and ordinance 30-24, authorizing engineering services for said project, number 358, and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Spielness.
Okay, well, we've been looking at this for a while now, and, so, yes, that bridge really needs some care, but it's costing more money than we had anticipated by some, so I want to just go over those adjusted numbers. All right, in Section 2, the 2025 Appropriation Ordinance 115-24 is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the following sums. So now it's 5,300,000 to Small Cities ODOT Fund 589, and then 875,000, 877,000 to Street Rehab Fund 572, and increasing the total appropriations by set amounts. Section 2 of ordinance 3024 is hereby amended to read as follows. Section 2. The service safety director is here, is further authorized to expend up to 6,177,000 as follows, 5,300,000 to Small Cities ODOT Fund 589, and 877,000 dollars from Street Rehab Rehabilitation Fund 572. Yeah, that's, that's a typo, yeah. I'm looking at that going, there's, it says Section 2, Section 1, and then it says Section 2, and then it says Section 3, and then it says, 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 Section... section two, and then it says section three, and it says, says section two again.
I think these are administrative typos that we can clean up.
They refer to two different ordinances.
Section of ordinance is hereby amended, oh.
Ah, right, gotcha.
Okay, so something, what needs to be changed? Debbie, do you have the correct?
I think it's probably correct if I know the clerk well enough.
The first section two refers to ordinance 11524, and the second section.
Yeah.
Three refers to ordinance 30 dash, or excuse me, yeah, 30-24.
Mm-hmm.
It is confusing, but I believe it's correct. Clerk Walker, do you see any problems?
I'd have to think about it.
Yeah.
That's just first reading.
It's just first reading, though, we can make these, and again, I think these are clerical fixes. Anything else to add, Members Spianis?
No, I just want to get this one done.
Yeah, and I would just say that.
It's been around too long.
If, correct me if I'm wrong, Members Spianis, but all of the, usually, often when we're doing these ordinances, we are having to add money. In this case, we are actually reducing the amounts because we received more money from the ODOT grant. Is that correct? I believe that's correct.
Yes, that, that is correct, actually.
Yes, so all of these changes are actually, most of them are a reduction from our, our funds.
Sir.
Yes, Members Swank?
Oh, since we're talking about this, one thing to point out, anybody that's been over on that side of town saw a bunch of signs wrapped up on Friday. The sign folks came in, and they're all wrapped up, ready to be placed in place. They should be going up, according to Director Stone, sometime in the next week to two, weather permitting and schedules permitting. Point being, the Stimson Avenue Bridge will remain open in one direction at all times and will be controlled by traffic lights. So you may have to wait an extra 30 seconds, maybe an extra minute, but you will be able to traverse that bridge during the construction. Therefore, there's really no need to be cutting through the near east side to beat the light, so to speak. So it will be open in one direction both ways. And one further thing, in case of an emergency, the sirens will, with a short period of time, basically render the lights unusable to cars so that the emergency vehicles can pass, and that's because of the new fire station. But it will be open one way at all times, one way or the other, alternating.
Thank you, Members Swank. Okay, moving on, ordinance 40-25, actually, 39-25, Stimson Avenue Bridge, city administration, any need to add? Members of the public, any, any questions or comments? Okay, moving on to 40-25, is an ordinance declaring certain police department firearms and other equipment no longer needed for a municipal purpose, introduced by Councilmember Thomas on behalf of Member McCary.
Thank you. As the title says, this is just the police department is getting rid of items that they no longer leave, need, including firearms, tasers, radios, and some other related equipment, and these are all from forfeitures or equipment, equipment that's been replaced and will be sold to a licensed dealer. That's it.
Thank you, Member Thomas. Any comments or questions from city council on this first reading? City administration, members of the public, seeing none, moving on to 41-25. An ordinance authorizing the service safety director to enter into a perpetual amended easement and right-of-way agreement with Columbia Gas Transmission LLC for continued maintenance of existing water and sewer lines, introduced by Councilmember Thomas on behalf of Member McCary.
As the president read, this is just a perpetual amended easement and right-of-way. Service safety director has worked through the agreement and has found it satisfactory, and I don't really have any additional notes unless there's any questions.
Thank you, Member Thomas. Any questions from city council, discussion? Yes, Member Clodfelter.
I am curious what this will mean in reality to give Columbia Gas, like, perpetual access. Is, is that in any way going to affect our home rule or anything? Okay.
Member, our mayor.
It won't, I mean, it's, it's a utility easement, you know, to put, make sure that transmission, the transmission of gas is effectively getting from point A to point B, and so we have this, we do these all the time, whether it's with AEP or Columbia Gas or anybody else that has a utility such as that.
Does having a perpetual easement reduce our ability to ask them if we think there's an issue or something?
No, not at all.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, Member Clodfelter. Any other comments or questions from city administration?
Actually, another city.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Member Thomas.
I would just, as a reminder, when we talked about this in committee, I believe, I'd have to pull up the email, but Director Stone had worked out that this actually gives some property back to us as the city, so we gain some property back on the whole.
Nice.
That's good.
Growing city. Any other comments or questions from city council members? City administration, members of the public on this utility easement? Seeing none, we will move on to announcements and other business. Are there any announcements or other business? We now move on to the opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services not covered on the agenda. If anyone has anything to ask or comment, you may come forward and state your name and your address, whether you represent a group. Love to hear from you. Seeing none, I would take a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. We are adjourned at 8:11 PM.